To the October 14th Board of Education meeting. Ms. Ree, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gardner is absent. Mrs. Macavina is absent. Mrs. Opaskar?
Present.
Mr. Sherbin?
Here.
Mr. Stobbe?
Here.
Would you please rise for our pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple of special presentations to get started today.
All right, well, good evening. This month begins our school spotlight at each of our board meetings, and this evening we have Avon Lake High School, and I'm going to turn it over to Principal Mr. May, and he has a group of students here to do a presentation for you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Greatly appreciate this opportunity on behalf of the group. So you have seen a whole lot of different AP data and things of that nature. We also have College Credit Plus, which is an amazing partnership with a lot of different universities. So what I asked the students to do today was, from their perspective, to provide you insight into these different types of classes. You've seen data, you've seen achievement rise the last five years, so I asked them to come give you their perspective. So they're going to be introducing themselves, and then they're going to tell you a little bit about that, and that's going to be our presentation today, and we are doing alphabetical order. Just everyone knows, I know. So with that, we're going to start.
My name is Leilani Adler. I'd first like to thank Mr. May and the Board of Education for giving us the opportunity to speak today. Taking 14 AP classes throughout my high school career has been more than just an academic challenge. It's been a defining experience that has shaped how I approach my life. These courses have taught me skills from intellectual curiosity to critical thinking skills, and have introduced me to wonderful people whose ideas and energy have continued to inspire me. AP classes haven't just prepared me for college, they haven't just deepened my understanding of individual subjects, they haven't just pushed me to think harder and work smarter. Instead, they've shown me the beauty of interdisciplinary thinking, how knowledge connects, overlaps, and enriches everything I do. These courses reflect all the dedication, perseverance, and curiosity I've invested into my education, and continue to guide how I engage with the world. AP classes have given me opportunities to explore my interests deeply, challenge my perspectives, and push the boundaries of what I thought was possible. Without AP classes, I truly don't think I would have gotten as much out of my high school experience as I did, or become the person or thinker I am today. Finally, I'd like to sincerely thank all my teachers and the Board of Education for making these enriching experiences possible for students like me. Thank you.
All right. Good job.
Hi, my name is Lena Draca. I'm a senior at the Avon Lake High School. I want to thank Mr. May for giving me this opportunity to speak about my experience with AP and Advanced Placement. I want to start off by kind of explaining like how prepared it has made me. A lot of classes give you that hands-on experience, and I know in AP Gov and Politics, you do real-life scenarios of kind of like the amendments and everything, and then I know a lot of AP tests also make me feel well-prepared, giving you all, giving me all of these resources and all these different websites to use. And then this has definitely helped me throughout my college application process. It's given me something to talk about, something I'm really interested in, and as well as exploring my interests, especially career-wise. I know I've been struggling with that, and taking all these different AP classes kind of has helped me with what I want to do in the future, and I really want to thank my teachers, Board of Education, and Mr. May for giving me this opportunity to speak about Advanced Placement.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Ian Fabbabe. I'm a senior here, and I'm in, I'm in cross-country track and swim. I do a lot of clubs here, and, but the AP and CC+ classes have particularly helped me a lot throughout my high school career, going through exploring, exploring subjects that I might want to pursue in the career. It's helped me pick out what I like, what I don't like, helped me go more in-depth into the subjects that I do like. I know classes like the CC+ Anatomy that is offered, that's really helped me get kind of a grasp of what like the medical field is, which is what I want to pursue, and it's helped me get an idea of what like the workload might be, and how to balance that with like my extracurriculars that, and it really just helps me, yeah. Along with helping me like go in-depth with my interests, it's saving me money, because through the CC+ classes and the AP classes, I earn credits that help me with college, potentially saving me hundreds of thousands of dollars. Also, the classes challenge me in a way that most of the normal classes, like, I mean, even the honors classes haven't really been able to, and that really gives me an opportunity to actually have fun at school, learn stuff. I know that specifically like AP Seminar and AP Lang have been some of the most beneficial classes for me with writing college applications and stuff like that, and I'd like to thank you guys for listening.
Thanks.
Hello, I'm Yara, and I'm a senior at Avon Lake High School, and I just wanted to thank you guys for your time today. Even though I haven't taken any CCP classes, I've taken more than 10 AP classes throughout high school, which has taught me a lot. AP classes are important because they give students both academic and practical advantages. They teach responsibility, time management, and critical thinking, which are skills that carry far beyond high school, but they also have a real financial impact. Each AP exam that earns college credit can save students hundreds or even thousands of dollars in tuition, and passing exams like AP Calc, AP Lit, or Lang, and AP Gov could count for nearly a semester of college, which lets students graduate early or explore other opportunities. And beyond the savings, courses like AP Seminar strengthen research and communication skills, while AP Government builds civic awareness and leadership. AP classes challenge students to aim higher, and they make higher education more accessible and affordable for everyone, which is why they've become fundamental parts of our education. Thank you.
My name is Lincoln Rose, and I'd like to thank you guys for your time today. This year, I'm a senior, and I've taken three AP courses last year, and I'm taking six more this year. First, I'd just like to say how AP courses have allowed me to grow better relationships with my teachers overall. For example, last year in AP United States Government and Politics, Mr. Schofield gave me the opportunity to be president during the class presidential campaign simulation, and this assignment allowed for more creativity and collaboration through these assignments and the schoolwork overall, which allowed me to develop a relationship with him that goes beyond my time in his class this year. In AP Seminar, Mrs. Grislinger was my teacher, who helped me tremendously as a student. She shaped me into the student I am today through her in-class discussions and just overall pushing me to put out my best work. She's helped me better understand current events through curriculum and assignments, which will help prepare me for college discussions and seminars I will face moving forward in my life. AP courses are also an incredible investment. They allow you to take college-level courses with smaller class sizes and that go at slower paces. They allow you to save money by waiving credits at some universities when you score well on the AP test. This also includes out-of-state schools, which CCP doesn't always cover. They prepare you for college-style exams that are worth the bulk of your grade, and allow you to get your final exam done weeks before school's officially out, which I see our students greatly appreciate. Overall, these AP students, these AP courses have allowed me to be a high achiever at ALHS, and they demonstrate the work ethic that Avon Lake students have, as we are recognized nationally for our involvement in Advanced Placement. They've been an incredible investment in my high, in my high school education, and have allowed me to collaborate with ambitious and both high-achieving students to prepare me for college-style and college-level classes before I even step foot on a university campus. So as students continue to further their education at Avon Lake, I would always recommend and push them to pursue this AP education, and I hope our district looks to build upon the existing courses already offered here. Thank you, guys.
Hi, my name's Madison Shaw. I'm a junior here at Avon Lake, and I take a variety of AP classes here, and I just wanted to thank you guys and Mr. May for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. AP classes are an excellent way to prepare for college and beyond. They challenge students with college-level material, helping to strengthen, strengthen critical thinking, writing, writing and problem-solving skills. Students also develop important habits like management, organization, and perseverance skills that lead to long-term academic success. Taking AP courses shows colleges you're willing to push yourself and explore your interests, whether it's from AP Environmental Science, AP Language and Composition, to AP Government. Plus, completing AP classes builds confidence and shows you're capable of handling rigorous work. At Avon Lake High School, we're fortunate to have such great AP teachers who make a real difference to me. First, we have Mr. Schofield, who does interactive and fun activities that incorporate the class and make, that makes world, real-world connections. Another teacher, Mr. Marsala, pushes his students to become stronger thinkers and more cohesive writers in AP Language and Composition. With dedicated teachers like these, AP classes are just not, are not just tough and rigorous, but they are also rewarding and set you up for great success in the future. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Wy Wiseman. I'm a junior at the high school, and first I would like to thank you for letting me speak here today. I take CC+ Spanish, which has helped me add more to my foundations of the Spanish language as well as the culture of the Spanish-speaking countries, along with getting me, improving my Spanish speaking and Spanish writing, while also helping me with getting credits for my college career, as it helps with both my knowledge and my future. It is really helpful towards my high school career as well. I also take AP Government, which has helped me learn more about the foundations and structure of our government that has stood for many decades, and it has helped me learn more about things and the happenings of our country and how it works. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julia Orzenkraut. I am a senior at Avon Lake High School, and as someone who is not the best test taker, CC+ classes are really nice, because your credit for college does not rely on a single test at the end of the year, and I will be going into college with several credits done from my French CC+ class, and, which has two parts within the one class, so I can opt out of my language within college, which is really nice. And the CC+ French goes really in-depth with the culture, which I feel like a lot of like the AP classes or the typical classes, you learn a lot of the grammar and stuff, but you really don't learn a lot of like the culture part, and so it's really nice in the CC+ French that we're able to get a lot more in-depth and learn about the culture in France. And I am taking a CC+ Earth Science completely online, because that's just how it fit with my schedule. It is offered in-person in the second semester here, but I wanted to take it first semester, and so it's completely online, and I'm able to do it at my own pace and when I want, and it really has taught me to be a lot more independent with my classes, and to learn how to manage my time better in and out of school. Thank you.
Tough group to follow. So, you know, Superintendent Maguire always talks about listening to the students, student offerings, student choices. As you can see, they've created their own opinions on these different types of courses that we have, and that's what she wants to solicit from them, that's what she's trying to grow, as we all get your support to do that. And the fact that they could come here today and do it so eloquently is amazing. So I'm going to end where they all started and we started, but just thank you all for your support and all the things that you do for all the kids, because it's through your support and leadership with us that we can have all these great things going on. So thank you all very much for everything, we appreciate it.
Thanks.
Great job, students and Mr. May, and students, quick quiz. Which high school in Lorain County offers more AP and CC+ classes combined than any other high school in Lorain County? A little louder, please. There we go. Great job, everybody, and thank you for coming out this evening.
If I could just jump in real quick too, before you guys take off, I think one thing that I don't want to lose sight of is that this is an area, you know, when I got on the board, I had a kindergarten and preschooler, so like I heard AP classes and college credit plus, and I didn't really know what that meant as far as what we offer, but we really have evolved. I, you know, a couple of you spoke about the foreign languages, and like that's a perfect example of something that's new, somewhat new to us, but those of you who wouldn't go through CC+ classes and then go to college, you're going to find like, hey, to get credit for those classes, it's a, it's a, it's a bar that we have to cross differently than, you know, now that we offer it through the school. So I appreciate that there's a lot of thought process that goes in behind what we're offering and how it's helping students, and it's not just like we have the same 10 classes we had five years ago, and five years from now, we'll probably have different offerings to help meet the needs of the students. So your feedback as you guys go off to college, and this happened, I know, with my daughter at Ohio State, when she found out, for example, on Spanish, that she had to take two Spanish classes because she didn't have a college credit plus class, like that's great feedback to bring back to the high school, that, you know, hey, if we could have had this, I could have gotten out of a, maybe a difficult class, and I think there's a lot of other kids that would benefit from it. So don't be afraid to come back and give us some feedback. All right? We will not make you guys stay the rest of the meeting too, so you're welcome to, welcome to go. Thank you for coming tonight.
All right. And for our next presentation, as you know, I've been mentioning the last couple of months, the strategic visioning that's been going on in preparation for our new 5'8" middle school, and we have an exciting presentation this evening. We have our architectural firm and our construction company here with us this evening, and at this time, we are going to invite the members to come on up, introduce themselves, and talk a little about where we are today.
I'm going to drive it all the way over. Hi, everybody. I'm Ryan Schmidt with TDA Architecture. We're going to run through kind of a quick synopsis of what's been going on over the last several weeks, a couple of months for this project. It's really exciting. There's so much goes into actually getting a project off the ground, and now we're at that point where you can start seeing the ideas, you can start feeling just the input from the community, from the staff, from the teachers, from the students, and it's, this is the most fun part of the project. So we'll jump into this. Agenda, we'll kind of go through introductions really quickly. I'll turn it over to Green Space. We have representatives from our construction company here today to give a little bit of a presentation from them. I'll touch base on schedule, engagement, design update, and just kind of lead you through some of the next steps. So this is our team. These are all the people back in the office that are actively working on a daily basis. We have a bunch more people that help support this team, but these are the folks that I work with and I talk to regularly throughout the day. This team will be supplemented as we move into other phases of the project, but this is a group that I've been working with, for the most part, for several, almost 10, 15 years, some of these folks. We do have a couple of emerging professionals as well, Kate and Logan, that have been participating in this process, and so it's like, like our side of things, it's always nice to bring new blood into the, into the equation, get new ideas and new ways of thinking about things, and it's been a really healthy process from our side of things as well. This is the project team. This is the group that as you come to visioning sessions, as you come to staff engagement processes and things of that nature, these are the groups you see. So obviously, representatives from the district. We've been very fortunate enough to work with administration, obviously, but staff members from the schools, and we've been lucky enough to work with kids and parents and community members as well. Our team, as I mentioned, it's the architects in the office, the designers in the office, but it's also all of our support. So we have all of our engineers that go into this, we have our communications team, all those folks. You're going to see a lot of people here over the next couple of years as we go through this process. And then last but not least is our construction professionals, and I will turn it over to Green Space.
Good evening, y'all. My name's Alessio Sodio. I'll be the project manager for all projects. Pretty much, I'll introduce our team as well. So Tu Scaparotti, she's the project executive slash owner. We'll have Nate Scaparotti, which will be the senior estimator, and then we'll have Steve DeWorke, who's going to be our project superintendent.
I'm Tim Rainey. I'm the senior project manager, which, that means I'm getting old, so that's why I got these guys.
It sounds very important.
Yeah. I was almost into retirement. I retired in February, but this job came up, and I was asked to come back, and I just lived down the road and for a million, so I was excited to
Awesome.
...have this opportunity to come over here, so I look forward to working with y'all on this job.
And we've worked with, I've worked with Tim for the last five years. We've completed multiple projects, so we have a pretty good relationship, so we put a pretty good team for this project, and all the projects. So on here, a little bit about us, so we've done, you know, work with all these districts. As you can see, our map is pretty broad, so we have a lot of experience with the K-12 project, so this is not something new to us. Experience with TDA, we've worked with them, you know, multiple times, some, some of the projects, as you can see on here, the most recent ones are the CMSD projects. We just wrapped up the Joseph Gallagher in Cleveland, and we finished Mary Seltzer, or sorry, Clark, and we're working on Mary Seltzer right now, too. So our experience with them has been, you know, consistent, so we, we've worked with them quite a bit. We put together the schedule, which we believe is very achievable. Some of these dates on here, it's pretty much kind of to give everyone an idea of what our intent is regarding to construction. So June 1st, 2026, we plan on issuing the notice of receipt to all the subcontractors. June 2027, we plan on doing the two elementary renovations. June of 28, we plan on doing the last renovation, and then obviously, we're going to wrap up with the abatement and demolition of the existing school, and then we're going to come back later down the road to do the final site work in April of '29. So we believe this is very achievable. Obviously, we're going to work with TDA in your district to make sure, you know, this, this happens.
So procurement and local contractor participation. Every district wants to get their local companies involved, and we'll, we'll really make an effort to do that. Well, that's a picture of a meeting we had in Cleveland with local contractors, and we'll do the same here. We'll, you can rest assured, and I know you guys will all be getting called, hey, you're building a school, I want to be part of it. We'll help you, to help them to get involved with this project. And we know how important site safety is, and when the construction's going on, we know that the job will be fenced in, it'll be accessible for the contractors, but we're going to be right on-site with the students. Our, our workers will be drug-tested and background-checked, so that only qualified people be on the site. Parking and deliveries will be separate from your school activities. We'll do our best to keep the dust down. We know we got to do that, keep the mud off the streets. We'll have Steve, you saw in the beginning, the project superintendent, his phone number's right there. If something's going wrong, we want to know about it right away, so that you guys don't have to have the headaches. Make the, make the neighbors aware that we're there, and we're there to, to help them with their needs.
Thank you. So as far as a project schedule goes, this is kind of generically what we're talking about. These are, there are so many pieces that go into each one of these phases, but we're in the design phase currently, which, laser, is laser? No, it's not laser. Is that laser? Oh, okay. So the gray box at the beginning is the design phase. We're at the very kind of beginning stages of that. We have gone through staff engagement, we have gone through educational visioning, which I'll talk about in a minute, but we are starting to take all that information we've gathered, and we're starting to put it into floor plans. We're starting to analyze massing of the building, what these things could feel like on a site. We've started looking at site circulation, so we'll talk about that a little bit as well. So we're at that point now where we've gathered a lot of information, and we're starting to get it down on paper. This doesn't stop now. So as we get plans together, the plans generally create more questions than they have answers. So we have these plans, now we go back to administration, we go back to staff, we go back to students and teachers and, and all those folks, and we get their input, we get their buy-in, we get their understanding of how this is going to ultimately work for the district. That all goes into the construction documents, which they'll ultimately use to bid the project and build the project. That's the construction phase, the big pink phase, and we'll be coming back periodically through this whole process, just to keep you informed as to where we are along this timeline. So engagement is very important. Communication is kind of the foundation of any successful project. So in order to do that, we, we did, we start with administrative retreat, that was very early on in the project. We got to meet a lot of the folks that are involved in the district. We had Construction Focus Group, which we came back and met with very early on, and then we had these last two big meetings in September. Staff engagement took place first, that was hosted here at the high school. We met down in the common space, cafeteria space. We met with staff from both Learwood and Troy at that meeting. Really nicely attended, folks were really energetic and excited, and I'll, I'll talk about that in a second. And then educational visioning, that was a broader meeting. That was one where we pulled in more teachers, and we pulled in community members, and city officials, and a whole big group of people to have some very interesting conversations. And then last part of this is really just to emphasize the fact that we're going to have periodic engagement as we go through this process. We're going to continue to involve staff and students and teachers and folks to make sure that we end up with a very successful project. So staff engagement, this was really nice. This was an opportunity to meet with the staff and talk about their existing buildings, find out what works really well, what doesn't work really well. People had long lists of both, which is nice to hear, and a lot of the times, the things that you see that work really well are about staff, it's about community, it's about being able to work with parents or, or work with their team of teachers to effectively teach the students. Some of the stuff that didn't work well were some of the spaces that prohibit them from doing those things to, to their fullest potential. So it was really nice to see those pairings. The, the most important part is the people, and the parents, and the family, and the community, that's here, and it's a matter of providing space for that ultimately down the road. That's what we're going towards. We also talked about facility wants and needs, so that was a matter of looking at a building, saying in each of these spaces, in a cafeteria, in a gym, in your classroom, what are the big things that would help you be more successful and be able to educate students in the most effective way? And we got a lot of valuable information from that. And then last but not least, we did a proximity adjacency diagram study, and that was basically like taking various spaces throughout a building and saying classrooms, if we had classrooms, what should be next to the classrooms? Well, I want my, my specialist, my intervention specialist nearby, so that they can interact with the students on a fairly consistent basis. I want my gymnasium next to, next to my student dining, so I have that relationship of being able to go from dining to gym, or for having those spaces after hours. It was those kinds of conversations that came out of that, which was really, I think, successful in opening people's eyes as to all those kind of relationships and adjacencies. Next, we had the educational visioning session, which was held in this room. Again, very nice turnout, very nice mix of, of folks at that meeting. We were lucky enough to have some city officials there, including the mayor, which was really nice. We had the SRO, we had some staff members, some students, parents. It was, it was a really nice meeting. This was one, again, we went through some of the successes of the buildings, we got to hear input from staff at Troy and Learwood as to their experience in those spaces and what they saw as successful, and some challenges. We did a really fun exercise, you can kind of see it up on the top right-hand corner, which was a student panel, where we had a moderator, and they asked the students some questions about their experiences and, in the buildings, and how, what they'd like to see in those spaces. So that was a really nice way to get students' perspective on certain things. Then we talked about future facilities. That's where we went through kind of the, the goals of the district educationally, we talked about different styles of learning environments, and then we talked about that kind of wants, needs for spaces. Last but not least, we did a building concept layout and design, and so this was, you can see up in the upper left-hand corner, the teams were set up across, and bottom left, actually, teams were set up with a site plan, and we had all the various components of the building, the classroom spaces, the gym spaces, circulation, and you were able to place them on the site and talk about why you'd want things where you did. It was, it was really great. We got a lot of information from it, and ultimately, it informed some of the decisions we're starting to make as we talk about site plans for, for the project. Project scope, just generally, just a refresher, we do have the elementary schools where we will be doing improvements, and so the main focus with the elementary schools will be on mechanicals, electrical, plumbing, and then what other infrastructural pieces that we can handle. Roofing, if we can do it, windows, if we can do it. Roofing, if we can do it, windows, if we can do it, those sorts of things. So that's the elementary schools. The middle school is the big portion of the work. That's going to be the new school built over on Lear. And then last but not least, is demolition of those two old structures, Troy and Learwood, at the end of the project. So design update on, this is the existing site. Some of the challenges that you have are that you've got this stadium that's way at the back end of the site. You've got a lot of parking that's front-loading off of Lear Road, which you can see over on the right-hand side going north-south. And then your building is kind of situated a distance from all that stuff that's in the back. There's benefits to this now, because you have parking that's up near the street. You have access that's up near the street. But you are very much separated into a back half of the campus and a front half of the campus. The other challenge you have is that the bus traffic and parent traffic is overlapping. So there's this interaction that we typically try to avoid when we do a new project. So as we looked at the site, as we're doing even the early studies, as we're pulling in our contractor, we looked at where you could put a new building. There is ample space behind the existing structure to build a new building. We go through this process all the time with similar sort of proximity, similar building sizes. There is enough space to construct a building there. Green space team is currently working on logistics plans to help illustrate how that will ultimately happen. But that's something we're excited to be able to show you in future meetings. And then out front, once the existing building comes down, you'll have opportunities to provide more circulation, site circulation for cars and buses and parking and things of that nature. So this is our current concept of site plan. This came, again, with some of the conversations we've had at these various meetings. This also was informed with some conversations we've been able to have with the city. We were able to have a very early meeting where we had some conversations about site circulation, being able to separate traffic and things of that nature. And this also came out of some of the goals of being able to try and unify sections of the site. So what you're seeing here is there's a top drive that allows access. There's a blue line there. That's your parent pickup and drop-off at the mornings and afternoons. And then across the bottom half of the site, that's your buses. So you'll be able to pull your buses in, stack your buses down at one end of the building, and be able to offload students separate of the cars. This separates bus and automotive traffic, car traffic, and allows a safer access point to the building. This also puts our pickup and drop-off in a similar location. So in the mornings and in the afternoons, when you're picking up or dropping off, you'll know where to go to pick up the kids. You're not having to circle around the entire campus to try and find people. This layout that we're currently working on is, we're able to create parking around various sides of the building and ultimately pull it closer back to the stadium and some of those north fields as well. So you get a much more distributed offering for parking and some overflow parking where the buses do their pickup and drop-off. And this is our current plan. This very much came out of some of the conversations that we had at the visioning session. So as everybody is aware, we have fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grades in this building. And there's obviously, there's going to be some concern as you have two existing buildings pulling these together, how that would function. This plan looks at the north section of the building and the south section of the building as being two kind of identities. The north portion, the top portion, that's all your core academic spaces. So all those beige blocks you see, those would be classrooms. Those would be support spaces for specialists, all of those things that are required at your kind of home bases for each grade level. So on the left, imagine you would have a stack, a tower, two floors. But it would be fifth and sixth grade, so a two-story space. And on the right-hand side, you can have seventh and eighth. So you have some separation. It's almost like two schools within a school. Some separation of grade levels, but you're able to kind of keep those existing relationships intact. Then in the center of the space, where you see that kind of teal color and green, you could have administration, your media center, some of your technology spaces, so that you've got this relationship between administration, your principals, all those folks, and those two wings in a very central spot. And then on the bottom side of the site, you'd see all your special spaces. So that's your gymnasium, that's your band rooms, that's your life skills, dining, all of those spaces that you might want access to after hours or in the morning. So there is this separation and the ability to kind of section the building into two pieces. And so where do we go from there? So what we're doing now is we're taking all that information we've gotten from those last two big meetings. We're going to create essentially reports. We're reviewing it on the fly as we're working on our development of these plans and these kind of elevations and sections and things. But there will be a report that we put together that we'll ultimately provide for everybody to review and kind of have that for, you know, historical knowledge. We'll also be working to continue this engagement. So as we go through this, as we develop these plans, we're going to continue to make those conversations happen, so that we keep refining these plans and adding layers of information to it. And then these tentative plans, as we get these developed, we're going to keep that relationship with the city going, and we're going to keep working through all those logistical items that go along with that as well. So talking with life, safety services, and folks of that nature, to make sure that as this project rounds out, we've got all of the components of a successful school accounted for. And that's all I have. Any questions, comments?
It seems like you guys are making great progress. I mean, sitting in our chairs, we've been able to see you every month, come and share. And this seems like a big leap from our last presentation, which is great to see, because, you know, a month ago, we were talking about having these visiting sessions. But to already kind of get some of these concepts preliminary on paper is great. I think our challenge, as we've talked about in past meetings, is continuing to educate people, trying to stay ahead of the questions, the concerns that folks have, because this is a big change. It's all good. It's a safer site. It's a more efficient site. We're going to be able to do so much more than what we do in our current buildings, but people are going to have concerns. And they're, the one thing that I always learn in this role is you never meet two people who are in the same part of the journey of their learning. So some people have no idea we're even building a new school. You know, our challenge is to continue to work with you guys to get information out to our public. I know we have some great stuff on our website and, you know, we'll keep talking about it. But thanks for, these updates are very valuable for you to comment and share with us.
Yeah, and to further on that, I mean, if there are questions that come up or certain topics you'd like us to elaborate on, just feel free to let us know. We're open book. We want to make sure everybody's as comfortable as we can. That's why we put so much emphasis on our communication side of our firm, is because that is, that's one of the things that's the most difficult, is making sure people understand why you're doing what you're doing, because there is a good reason for everything that we've talked about, so.
If I remember correctly, on that site plan diagram, when you had the school now back, the front, those, some of those fields that were, are now getting, going to have a school on top of, are being moved to the front green space around that parking. And I live in that area. I drive by all the time and, you know, I think I was driving by just this last weekend when soccer or something was going on. And you see all the parents are parked up in the front, and then they're all trudging around the side of the school, walking through the grass. And I know that can get, you know, pretty muddy in the fall when it starts raining. So I think this new design also will help. The parking's going to be right there at the fields, and there's no walking around the building to get to the fields anymore.
And that's about this wholly inclusive idea, making sure that all those components that happen on this site, we do our best to account for. So good observation. I like it. Anything else?
No. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the time, and we'll see you very soon.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
And we'll have all these presentations on the website tomorrow morning.
Great, awesome. All right. Next item is our food service update, correct? Unless I missed anything, Jack? All right, Andrea.
Just grab it.
Just pull it down.
That's fine, Jack. Well, another year of food service. Food service is off to a great start. Current food news, food service news. Visiting again this year, we're doing the cooking classes with Chef Amy. We started out at Troy this year. There was a huge interest, overwhelming interest. A lot of parents that were a little upset that their child wasn't able to get in. I have to hold the classes at, you know, 12 kids per class. I'm doing it twice a week, so a five-week series twice a week. So that's 24 kids that are getting to get, be able to do the cooking classes. So we decided to do it again in the beginning of next year. We'll have another class for Troy, so other kids can, you know, get to enjoy the cooking classes. Some of the regulations that are new this year, lower amounts of added sugar for the breakfast items. We don't do a reimbursable breakfast, but we do do some of the cereals and the yogurt parfaits and stuff. So that did impact us a little bit with getting different products with the lower added sugars. Continuing from the third year, families that qualify for reduced lunches will continue to receive lunches at no cost. So they don't have to pay the 40 cents. The state is funding the extra 40 cents, so the parents, the families don't have to pay that. So this is Chef Amy, and this is last year's group at Westview with the cooking classes. And then this is our scheduled menu for the five, the first five-week series that we're doing at Troy. And actually, today was our last day for our Tuesday class, and then tomorrow will be our last day for the Wednesday class. So Chef Amy thought that the teriyaki bowl was their favorite, but she's thinking that the hash brown breakfast bowl is a first runner-up for their favorites. She's great with working with the kids. Like she brought pumpkins in from home, and the kids cut them up, cooked them down for the pumpkin swirl muffins. And then she took the seeds and roasted them, just really showing the kids, you know, other opportunities that you can do with food. She makes her own salad dressings. She does a really good job working with the kids. And then here are some pictures from the Troy kids enjoying, they do their own dishes. They clean up. They do all their chopping. They get to, obviously, they have to try. If they don't want to taste something on the menu, they at least have to try it. But for the most part, they really do like everything. The tuna one, I think probably was their less, least favorite. But boys and girls alike, they all really enjoyed the classes. So as far as the new regulations with added sugars, like I was saying, so we can't have more than six grams of added sugars per one ounce of grain or protein. But all the vendors, they really got on board and offered all the new products with the lower amount of added sugars. Upcoming regulations down the road are the artificial dyes in our products. And we're already trying to eliminate any product that has, that only has artificial dyes in it. The cookies that we buy, all the dyes in that are all natural. They come from beets or spinach or whatever. So we already done that, have accomplished that with our Dogo cookies. There is a company that's, it's called Green Onion, and they are supposed to offer a large line of clean products. So I'm looking forward to getting ahold of them and seeing how many products they have to offer that we can get into our menus. Our participation this year actually is, all six schools are, almost by a thousand lunches from the beginning of school till now are up from last year. There's a little bit of decrease in the free and reduced students. And with our new pay schools, the online applications have been great. I went from 15 last year to only about six paper applications that came in that I had to import. It's really nice online. The parents can go in, do their application, and they get an automatic determination, you know, whether they're free or denied. So as usual, sustained compliance with offer versus serve. All students have to choose at least three components out of the five components that are offered, which are milk, protein, grain, fruit, and a vegetable. At least one of these items has to be half a cup of fruit or vegetable. All of our snacks are smart snack approved. So I have a few parents that were concerned about a la carte, the extras, you know, are we not offering healthy options for these? But I don't know if they understand that they all have to meet that smart snack approval. There's an actual calculator, like if one of my employees puts something on their DMS order and it's like, oh, no, that reaches, you know, this compliance, so I'll run it through the calculator and it'll say yes or no. So it's a good tool to have. I want all the parents to know and the kiddos, too, that if they're still hungry and they come back, and we always offer extra fruit and vegetables at no cost, you know, within reason. Obviously, they can't take 10 apples home and, you know, they can't complain with. You know, we always want them to eat the fresh fruit and vegetables rather than maybe a little fat ice cream or a smart snack chip or whatever. So we always do offer them extra fruit and vegetables. So along with the smart snack standards, they have to be under 200 calories or less. The sodium has to be 200 or less. Only 35% of the calories from less, for the total fat, saturated fat, less than 10% of the calories. There's no trans fats in any of the products that we use. And the total sugars have to be 35% by weight or less. So my hopes for the future, I know I said this last year about the hydroponic towers, so I really am going to look further into that, see if we can work that in. With the new building coming up, I have hopes for being totally sustainable. Hopefully, up-to-date dishwasher, go back to the hard trays, silverware, and then whatever paper products that we need to use, have them be postable. There's a lot of new compost dehydrators that you can purchase. Hopefully, by then, they'll come down in price. I looked them up, they're very expensive. But if we could do that, have our own compost, create our own dirt, and then share that with the community, with the community garden, I think that would be a great full circle. And then obviously, get recycle bins for any other items that we use to compost it. We did try it at the high school, composting. We had a company that came and picked up the compost. It was difficult. It was hard to get the kids to put the stuff in the right containers, and then it would be contaminated. And the company wanted to charge us if it was too contaminated. That was before COVID, and then it kind of just went on the wayside after COVID. So I highly recommend revisiting that in the future.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Andrea. All right, our next presentation is on our Avon Lake City Schools Foundation. Our favorite public speaker.
I love it. It's my favorite thing. Hello, Kristen Mesa, Avon Lake City Schools Foundation President. We had a couple of meetings this year, and this so far is our grant list, the first of quite a big start this year, which we are very excited about. So these six on the board or screen, I feel like I don't need to read them. But they are the first six totaling $19,472.69, which is very exciting for us, considering that's like our total from like last year. So this is great. We also have several that have come in since our last meeting, three weeks ago, I'm going to say. We have a meeting in next week, that we have a handful more grants that we're just going to, we're just going to review them early. Why wait? We're just going to do them now. So we're very excited. So my, I have a lovely speech at Convocation must have worked, so, yes.
How did your Connect to a Cause fundraiser turn out?
Very well. I believe, I want to say 18,000, but we haven't had our meeting yet. So Allison just told me. But I want to say it went really well. Oops, if I spelled her name correctly.
Sorry to put you on the spot there.
Oh, I'm kind of used to it. I mean, um, the total raised for our endowment was $11,514.63.
Awesome.
So it's, it's, it's great. So every year, we add it to our endowment, and then we're able to do these grants. So it goes 100% right back in, so, yes.
All right. Well, thank you for sharing all that great news for us.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
All right. Jack, do we have any public participation comments? Just one or two? Okay. Uh, just, uh, the next item on our agenda is our public participation. Uh, just as a reminder, our public participation at board meetings, meetings is permitted to allow individuals from the public to address the board on a variety of concerns and is not intended to be a forum for extended conversation or dialogue with the board members or district officials. The primary role of the board is to listen and reflect on your comments. Sometimes board members may respond or ask questions. Whether we respond or not, your input is valued. Um, the public participation session is for general comments, matters relevant to the school district. Those who wish to address the board must complete a comment card and each person will be given three minutes to speak up until a total of 30 minutes as used. So who's our speaker tonight?
Melissa Head from the Athletic Boosters.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
So I'm Melissa Head with the Avon Lake City Schools president. And Erin Shaker, the executive director is also here today. Uh, we just feel very fortunate that we have.
Would you mind speaking in the mic just so that, since we're recording this?
Oh, sorry.
Awesome.
Feel bad talking with my.
Yeah. You could take it out of the thing if you'd rather just stand and talk.
Um, so we just feel very fortunate, um, to be able to have the fundraising from the parents, from the athletes, um, from basically all of our establishments that can give us these funds so that we can give them to help benefit and enhance these sports. Um, I just am here to be on the minutes, um, tonight to correct, um, some of the funds, um, they are incorrect, the, uh, numbers. And also I'd like to review a little bit about the process of giving the money to the school. I'm sure everybody that donates money has to follow this policy and procedure. Um, I'm just not sure if, um, it's going as I thought it would go. So, um, first last Friday, um, the 12th, um, we were asked by the athletic department to drop off checks. And these checks are, um, as followed here. It was what was asked of by the athletic department. Um, we did drop off. They said, can you get it done Friday? I said, yes, I'm working, but I can be there by 3 o'clock when I pick up my daughter. I'm happy to meet her at the Board of Education. Um, I came in, I did see Ned. We talked about the scoreboard, um, and I wrote all the checks. Um, it's pretty, feels pretty good to be able to give this, uh, type of money to the school. Um, also when I was there, I gave Dale, female Dale that works there, um, this list. So there isn't any like confusion of what we're giving. Um, the second page there is just the procedures that have been given to us multiple times verbally and written email that, um, check in hand, the donation that ALB to the district is not contingent on board approval. You make the donation, then the board decides to use it for what you're asking for, not to use it for what you're asking for or to not take the money. So it's important to us to know and it's documented and recorded for our nonprofit, for our records, that you are using the checks for what they're supposed to be used. So having them being dropped off on the 12th of September, having them not being on the, um, the next page is September's Board of, um, Agenda for the Board, um, having it not being on there. And like checks were cash. You can see I got them from my bank, um, on the 17th. They were deposited before your meeting and cashed on the 17th. And following that, on October 9th, um, October 4th, we also presented checks and they were cashed on the 19th. None of these have been presented to the board, but they were all cashed. Um, if that's a different policy, please let us know in an email. You don't have to discuss it tonight. Um, after that, um, I did see the agenda, which is the third page tonight. The third page is the agenda for tonight. And you can see, um, this page right here. In the dark highlight, which is the full highlight, are the checks that were given and cashed. You can see them cashed that were not put on tonight's agenda. Okay? That's the 35,000, the 10,000 and 25,000. And I'll review that too, uh, real quick. The 35,000 was discretionary grant for the ADs to be able to use at the high school. The $10,000 is to be used for the Learwood Middle School at discretion of him. There is the light underline, which is the 55,000. The 55,000 is a grant that is given to the uni, uh, the, uh, both schools for uniform replacement and we paid it. And that's a good thing. Um, and then we go down to T3 training and that is asterisk because they wanted to pay it monthly. So we are paying that monthly. So you won't see that 45,000 on the agenda. You'll see it as the, um, 37.50. Um, then at the Capital School, you'll see the 50,000 is noted correctly. The 75,000 is also noted correctly. The student wide athletic tax that everybody knew we have, the 25,000 is not on the agenda today, but the check was cashed. Um, so I will also need that in the notes or the minutes for the, for our records. Uh, next is the 13,000 for the huddle. And then underliner is not the money that goes to the school, but it does go to the team accounts. It's $23,000. That's $25 for each high school athlete and then additional $10 for each Learwood Middle School athlete that goes into their funds or their, um, for any type of banquets or whatever they have for their coaches. So with that being said, this is for you to keep for your records, um, to update the agenda and add those items to your agenda. That should be there as, unless the policies change before you cash the checks. So, thank you.
All right. No more, no more comments?
No.
That's, yeah. Okay. Um, next we'll move on to the business part of our agenda. Um, the first item of the agenda today is the approval of the minutes from the September 16th meeting. It was the only meeting we had in September. Does anyone have any issues with those minutes? Could I have a motion to approve the September 16th minutes?
Hey, so move. Second.
Uh, roll please.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next we'll move on to the treasurer's consent items.
Thank you. Uh, the treasurer's consent items tonight for your consideration will be our regular monthly reports. We have no advances, return of advances or transfers tonight, but we do always list them on the agenda just in case we would have one. Uh, the appropriation amendments for the current fiscal year, the approval of then and now purchase orders. All of that is very normal business for us on a monthly basis. We also have an approval of a tri-party agreement between Bonefish Systems, which is the company that we use for all of our fraud detection and Fifth Third with the district. This will allow us to give the option to ACH, our vendors. We have an approval of Oberlin College Recreation Department Facility Rental Agreement for your consideration. Um, that is having to do with the high school swimming and diving team for the current school year. We also have the Effective Leadership Academy Proposal for Student Participation in Lorraine County Career Leadership Academy Program for the current school year. And the Educational Service Center of Lorraine County Service Agreement for Substitute Psychologists, Educational Aid, Physical Therapists and Occupational Therapists for the current year. So those are all of the treasurer's consent items for tonight.
All right. Any questions? Can I motion to approve the treasurer's consent items?
So move.
Second.
Uh, roll please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Our next item is going to be a little, uh, longer discussion. It's going to be on our, uh, five-year forecast. And I know, um, Autumn, at the last meeting you mentioned that, um, due to some state changes in the calendar, that's the reason why we moved this, uh, meeting up to today so we can get this finalized. So with that, I'll let you, I'll turn over you to go over the forecast.
Thank you. As, as many of you know in the audience, um, I could talk about the forecast as lengthy as you want me to be or as brief as you want me to be. So this is a general overview, just a broad overview of our, our five-year forecast. So as Mr. Stobie mentioned, we did have some changes in our requirements for submission to the Ohio Department of Education, um, or what is now called ODU, Ohio Department of, uh, Education and Workforce. So our first initial submission is due October 1st this year. If you remember last year, it was due at the end of November. And again, the follow-up was due, um, by the end of May. So now our submission for this fiscal year will be by October 15th and then by, um, February 28th. So with that, as we look at fiscal year 27, we have to look at different submission deadlines. So next year, our submission deadlines will be August 31st and then the last day of February. So those deadlines are changing as well. And that's all due to the changes in the most recent budget bill, House Bill 96. So as we look at our five-year forecast, what's the methodology? What goes into our five-year forecast? It, it does reflect only the general fund. It does not include our permanent improvement fund or any of our other, um, funds that we have. All of our separate checkbooks that we have within the district, our bond retirement, none of that is included in the five-year forecast. Only our general fund, which is our operating account. So what's included in the five-year forecast? How do we come up with what type of assumptions are factored in? We look at historical trends. We look at what's going on locally at a state level, how that impacts us. What does our enrollment look like? Our staffing? All of that is factored in. And as you know, any of that can change at any time, especially when we're talking our funding from the state or we're looking at things most recently at a local level. We'll talk about that a little bit more in detail as we get into the presentation. But we try and look at trend over time and how will that impact our forecast? So that way we have a clear path of what those five years look like for us. The state is only requiring this year a submission of the current year budget with three additional years. But as best practice, we're continuing to provide a financial forecast that is five years for our community. So again, tonight's presentation is just a broad overview. If you have questions, you're always welcome to reach out to me. The five-year forecast will be available on our website tomorrow on the link that is listed and it's, um, under the treasurer's webpage. It'll also be attached to the agenda. So as we look at our simplified financial forecast, we see that there's, um, five years. We have the current fiscal year, fiscal year 26. It goes out to fiscal year 30. In May, our community supported the passage of an emergency levy that was an operating levy, a $3 million operating levy that, um, we will receive over a 10-year period of time. The community also supported a bond issue, as you heard earlier, to construct a 5'8" building as well as renovate our existing elementary schools. Now, the passage of the operating levy was integral to stabilizing our finances. So as we look out even 10 years from now, what does that look like? And what did it look like at that point in time when we passed that levy? Because we have some pending legislation that could change that picture for us. So our new 5'8" middle school is expected to open in the 28, 29 school year. None of those savings that are associated with that will be included in this forecast currently. As we get closer to that point in time, we'll factor those savings in because there's a lot of unknowns right now related to what those savings will look like. So as we get further into that time period, we will incorporate those into the five-year forecast. Just a general overview of our revenue. We are heavily locally funded. So about 78% of our revenue comes from local taxes. We have about 18% that comes from the state. So there's two components there. We have our state funding, which we receive just shy of 10%. And then we also have, um, restricted funding that we receive a small amount and then reimbursement for homestead and rollback or now we're learning partial reimbursement for homestead and rollback. And I'll get into the details of that later. So as we look at our revenue, you can see that our revenue is going up into fiscal year 30. So that is due to the passage of the emergency levy this last May. So as we look at fiscal 26, this does include a half year of collections of the $3 million emergency levy that was passed in May. Fiscal 27 will include a full year of collection.
Autumn, just to interject, because I heard, I've heard you say this and I, I just heard one's benefits, $3 million a year for 10 years, so.
Correct. Yes. So there's a provision that was put into the current state budget that allowed our county commissioners to, um, offer what's called a piggyback exemption. So that would be a homestead exemption and a 2.5% rollback, um, credit to our seniors and disabled veterans. So the local county commission here in Lorraine County did choose to exercise their right to implement this. And it's difficult because we all want to provide that tax relief for our seniors. But the hard part about it is this, what they called the piggyback provision, it doesn't provide funding to the school system to keep us whole for those credits. So what the county did was they went ahead and they exercised that right by doubling the homestead exemption and the 2.5% rollback for our senior population who are eligible for that exemption and rollback. So for Avon Lake City Schools, that's a loss in revenue for us of over $1.3 million for tax year 25. So because we're in a fiscal year and because taxes are collected a year in arrears, that hits us over the course of two separate fiscal years. Tax year 25 will. So this, we're going to realize this loss partially this current fiscal year and then into next year. So that is factored into this five-year forecast. We just learned of this last week because it was voted on last week. So, um, for us, as we look at the $3 million emergency levy we just put on the ballot, we just lost 1.3 million that fast with this action. So countywide, this was a little over $17 million countywide that was lost to schools, cities, the community college, the JVS. Our library lost, oh my, almost like $70,000. It's like $68,000. So this is definitely going to impact our budget.
Uh, Autumn, can I pause there for a second? Is that, um, $1.3 million an estimated number? Or is that fairly strongly calculated at this point? Like, could it be more than that or less than that? Or do we not know yet?
Well, the, those who are eligible currently for the homestead exemption as well as the 2.5% rollback credit, they will automatically be given this.
So they don't have to take any action? It's not like they have to fill something out to get the credit? So there's not a, it, the, the numbers will be automatically deducted from what?
For those who are already eligible, yes. So this number is calculated and was provided by the Lorraine County Auditor. Um, so this is definitely a, a very close estimate to what it will be, if not greater.
And you, you mentioned this a little bit, but when we were, um, putting the levy on the ballot back in November, December, this wasn't even a discussion item, right?
It was not. No, we were contacted, um, last week actually. Um, and, and Ms. Magyar and I had a discussion actually the day that it came in because she was in Columbus at a conference where she's hearing a lot of what's going on from a lobbying standpoint. And we paused for a minute to say, do we want to include this? Because there was some, uh, talk down in Columbus that maybe there would be changes to this. But because it was acted on and we didn't hear anything further, we felt it was important to include in the forecast and educate our community about this loss. I do know there's been a couple articles in the Chronicle as well related to this. If you would like more details, I know there's information available there as well.
So Autumn, this loss of revenue, this is every year going forward?
This will be, originally when we were contacted, we were told we were only losing the homestead portion. We were contacted the next day by the county auditor's office and said it also included the 2.5% rollback and that it was for just tax year 25. So currently that is what's voted. So currently, that is what's voted on.
Okay, so... So it's not all the years beyond that, but it could be taken to other future years?
It will not be an annual loss at this point, but I think when you see later into the presentation, some of the provisions that are being looked at in the legislation that is proposed down in Columbus, this is probably the least of our worries.
Yeah.
It's not a huge, huge hit to our budget.
You know, the process of us putting a levy on the ballot and getting it passed took, you know, over three years, and then basically overnight, you're given the notice that we're losing 8% of our revenue without any plans to or contingencies to make that up. It makes it really hard to financially forecast our finances when that happens.
It does. So the best that we can do is try and be as transparent as possible about it, provide the documentation to, within our five-year forecast, to include these losses. Through the years, we have really tried to balance, well, what are we hearing versus what is realistic? What is probably going to happen? And there was action taken on this at the county level, so we felt this was important to include in the forecast. So as we look at our state funding, this is our funding that we get on a per pupil basis. So our state funding, which is called, there's a base cost methodology to the Fair School Funding Plan, and the state share is based on local wealth, property values, resident income, number of students we have, our student needs. So that is all built in to the state side of the calculation for per pupil funding. But when we look at our calculation, because every school district is going to be a little different because it is truly based on actual costs, so we have about $8,082 per pupil that the state should fund Avon Lake Schools per pupil. But because of all the factors that get put into this funding formula, and because the funding formula is not fully funded at a state level, we only get $808 per student. So how is that difference made up? It's locally made up. You saw earlier in the slides that we are heavily locally funded. So in the state size, they look at Avon Lake City Schools and our community that we have a greater capacity to tax locally. So they reduce our state share. So we are actually at the minimum, we're at the 10% minimum threshold of funding from the state of Ohio. So the most recent numbers available, which means 90% of our funding is coming from our local taxpayers. So at the statewide average to, the average cost to educate a student was $16,310 in the '23-'24 school year. So think about that, 16, over $16,000 is the statewide average. We get $808 to educate a student here. So our actual cost to educate a student is actually for that, for fiscal year '24, is actually less than the statewide average. It was $15,923. So that is the most recent number available in the CUP report, or what's also called the District Profile Report. So we're educating a student for just shy of $16,000, but only getting $808 per pupil from the state of Ohio.
Just one other perspective, forget the state funding piece of that, but you know, if you had to rank your, rank districts from the quality of education that you get in the state of Ohio, and there's 600 school districts roughly, right? You know, we would probably put ourselves in the top 5%, yet what this is telling us that we're spending in the bottom half of what schools across Ohio are doing, yet we're a top 5% performing school or better. So, you know, people who want to question how we spend our money, it's a challenge to meet those goals when we don't have the funding sources to match what is really the average to cost a student in the state of Ohio.
You're right. And I think our students that we had here tonight are a great example of the quality education that we provide. We provide a lot of academic opportunities for our students at all levels. And unfortunately, by the time I get done with this presentation, I think we should all be concerned about what that looks like for us in the future if the proposed legislation is passed. So as we look at our expenses, we, our expenses have increased by 4.81% over the past five years, and they're projected to increase 3.95% through fiscal '30. As a school district, we're a service industry. We educate our students, so our primary expense is going to be salary and benefits in order to do that. But we're actually below so many school districts in the state of Ohio. We're at 76% right now. If you remember, we eliminated about $2.5 million over the last two years, and primarily that was in staffing. We right-sized to our enrollment, and our personnel costs are down. They're down to 76%. So our expense overview, we have purchased services, supplies, capital outlay. We're at about 24% currently as far as the breakdown. So when you look at that simple line graph, or line chart of revenue compared to expenses, our revenue is greater than our expenses. But as we get into fiscal '30, and we fully expected this to happen, because remember at the beginning of my presentation, I mentioned we haven't built in any reductions yet associated with our new buildings, reducing our footprint. So by fiscal '30, we will begin deficit spending by about $2 million. We fully expect, once we put in those savings as we get closer, that we will not be in a position to where we're deficit spending, assuming that none of the factors change in the forecast, for example, our revenue stream. So the forecast is as good as today because we only know what we know today. So I do want to make that clear. So as those operational savings associated with the reducing that footprint are incorporated into the forecast, we do look for it to become much more favorable. So as we look at our days cash on hand, the May levy definitely was the main driver in the increase in our days cash on hand. So as I mentioned, we have made approximately $2.5 million in reductions, and those reductions have a compounding effect on our five-year forecast because the way Ohio is structured, the pension systems are a direct percentage of whatever you're paying your employees. So the board has to pay 14% of a teacher's salary into STRS, but the employee, the teacher, also pays 14% into STRS. So all of the savings associated with those reductions have had a positive effect on our forecast from a numbers standpoint because it's reduced our cost.
And Autumn, just for clarification of those who may not know, that 14% that we have to pay to STRS for the teachers is really similar to what everyone's employer pays to Social Security. Teachers do not get Social Security.
That is correct.
Because they don't pay into it. So if people are listening, like, why are you paying 14% of it? We have to, because it's just like your employer paying 15% or whatever it is into Social Security. We don't pay that. We just pay the 14 into the retirement STRS.
That's correct. And it's actually in Ohio revised code that this is how a school district operates. So it's not just Avon Lake Schools who's paying that. It would be every school district in Ohio. So as we look at our forecast as a whole, long-term, the savings associated with the reduction in footprint, and that would be our Troy building closure when that occurs, we're currently operating two very old buildings. We have Learwood and we have Troy. So the operational savings we're going to see at that time later after the closure of those buildings, once that is realized, that will definitely help our bottom line. And again, we were notified last week about this loss of over $1.3 million, and this is what's called the piggyback homestead and 2.5% exemption that was voted on locally at the county level. So at this point, before I get talking about the funding challenges on this next slide, I would like to ask Ms. Magyar to share some facts about school funding.
Are you sure you want me to share the facts about school funding?
Well, I think that the facts are important for everyone to hear because a lot of the legislation that is pending right now, it's extremely confusing. And you're going to see, even as I talk about some of these things, I'm going to be referencing my notes because it is confusing. Some bills kind of tie together. They have pieces that are similar, others do not. Just hearing a House bill number isn't enough to describe what's going on, but I think what Joelle is going to talk about will be helpful to start this conversation.
Yeah, I think just to give some background, you've heard me say many times that school financing was ruled unconstitutional back in 1997, and they haven't fixed it yet. And so it took about, a group of 12 superintendents got together about four years ago to come up with a new funding model, and the state accepted that funding model, but they chose to implement it over a six-year period. They should be fully implemented right now, except what they did is they turned around and they changed that formula and said, instead of using the current numbers that you gave us, we're going to go back to 2022 numbers. So while it will appear, if you talk to any of your legislators, that schools are getting more funding, they're not because they lowered the base on which they were calculating that funding on. So school funding was ruled unconstitutional back in 1997. It used to be in 1991, homeowners such as yourself and myself and farmers paid about 47% of school property taxes. Today, those two groups pay 70% of school property taxes. So the burden on a homeowner has become more just through the reductions that they've made in the state to school funding and then pushing that out to the local taxpayers. So in that period of time, from 47% of what we paid as a homeowner now is over 70% statewide. It now ranks the state of Ohio 45th in the nation in state funding for public schools. So we are one of the worst ways to fund our schools, 45th out of 50 states. And why has that happened? Just as I said, as they've, you've eliminated some methods of state funding and pushing that onto the homeowners, and they have slowed down the way that they have funded us over the years. So we're doing more with less. In 22 years, the state's school funding has grown less than 1% when you adjust for inflation, but yet our costs are rising at the same level of inflationary costs. So while our funding hasn't been less than 1%, our costs go up every year by two to three, whatever the inflationary rate is. And so they're asking us to do more. I think when we, when I was down in Columbus and we called to question some of these things that they're doing on property reform, they're like, just tighten your belts, just tighten your belts. That's what you need to do, need to do more with less. And, you know, at some point, you're going to start bleeding. And a lot of these bills are so focused on property tax reform, and when asked the question, well, what are you going to do to replace the money then if you give property tax relief, which we all want, what are you going to do with that? They don't have an answer. Their answer is tighten your belt and do more with less. And so these are just a couple of samplings of bills that are on the docket right now that are being considered. Some of them are devastating. Some of the vetoes overrides that have just occurred have also impacted us. One of those veto overrides was the elimination of emergency levies. We just passed one in May. And what they were looking to make it retro for a couple of years, that has not passed. So after this emergency levy expires in 10 years, we can't renew it. And so this is devastating to not just us at Avon Lake, but it's devastating to many schools who had possibly renewals that were coming up on the ballot right now, that they can't even put them on the ballot. So Autumn's going to go through some of these other bills and just a quick summary so you know what's coming down the pike.
Can I interrupt on the emergency levy thing? Because this is a real hot button for me. Like, in Avon Lake, other than our bond issue that we just passed, the only levies that we passed over the last 15 years have been emergency levies. And as a board, and you know, I've been part of those discussions for a long period of time, the reason why we have gone down that road is it was a clear amount of money that, when we were presenting it to the public, that they could understand versus, obviously there's millage and other stuff associated with it, but we could say, like we just said today, we passed a $3 million a year levy for 10 years. On the other side of that, if we're getting a voter trying to make the decision yes or no, they at least understand what that means. And I know the term emergency really doesn't make any sense, so I'm glad that they're maybe getting away from that. But the concept of a fixed dollar levy is very important to, especially in communities like ours where you have astute people who are trying to make financial decisions, do I want to support this or not? They want to know what the numbers are. It can't be any clearer than an emergency levy when we are, when that dollar amount is fixed. So this is kind of crazy to me that we're going away from that because it's the clearest form of a transaction between a voting public and a school district.
So what's the replacement? Like, what is, if we're not allowed to put emergency levies on, what type of levies and how do they work?
Well, there's different legislation that provides different options. But one piece of legislation that is more favorable to us as a school district is going to be what's called House Bill 129. And that will restructure our school district levies and bring back, not by terminology, emergency levy, but what's called a fixed sum levy. So there's fixed rate levies that are millage-driven levies, and there are fixed sum levies, which are dollar amounts, as Jim described, with an emergency levy. So this legislation would bring back some of the pieces that House Bill 96 eliminated, but it still has damaging effects to our budget the way that it's structured. So what this bill is looking to do, so this is House Bill 129, any emergency or substitute levy that was approved before 2026 may be renewed, but it can be renewed as a fixed sum levy for up to 10 years. Now, our substitute levy that we have on our books is for a continuing period of time. So as of right now, that levy is not in jeopardy of not being renewed because it's for a continuing period of time. But our emergency levy that we just passed, when it comes up for renewal, we would have to renew it as what's called a fixed sum levy. Now, levies that were passed, they were approved before September 29th of 2013, those levies have what's called a rollback credit. So there's a 10% rollback credit and a 2.5% rollback credit that every homeowner is given as a tax credit on our own tax bills. So we don't pay that portion of the levy, but the state reimburses us for, reimburses the school district for any rollback credit that is given. So with this legislation, the rollbacks would continue on levies that were approved prior to the... prior to that date, September of 2013. Now, what is put into this bill is a levy that's called fiscal distress or disaster levies. Those would be allowed to be put on the ballot for up to five years, but they would not be renewable. So that's an overview of House Bill 129. It would take some of the pieces from the budget bill that was just recently passed in July, or effective July 1. It would at least renew the ability for us to put those fixed sum levies on the ballot to be renewed. So of any of the pieces that are laid out here, this is the most favorable for us. Now, we also have House Bill 309. House Bill 309 is going to modify the way the county budget commission's authority works. So last time I checked, our community votes for, elects a Board of Education locally to oversee what happens in our school districts. Our Board of Education, our superintendent, assistant superintendent, myself, we oversee that academic piece, the financial piece. What this bill does is it modifies the authority that the county budget commission, which consists of the prosecutor, the treasurer, and the auditor, and in lieu of a prosecutor, a county commissioner could be put as part of the budget commission. It would give them the authority to reduce our revenue. Now, again, the last time I checked, they don't know what our kids are, our kids that came here tonight and talked about their academics, they're not in tune to what's going on in our school district.
So you have three people that have zero connection to Avon Lake, that don't live here, that may have never even stepped foot in Avon Lake, has the authority, if House Bill 309 passes, to just tell Avon Lake schools, we don't care what your citizens have passed in the terms of tax levies and what your revenue is, we're going to override the will of your citizens and just take money away from you.
It gives that authority under certain rules.
Well, what are the conditions that they could do that?
So, some of those conditions, and I'm going to read verbatim here. So, they're granted the authority to reduce the amount of rate of a tax levy, other than debt levies. If the commission determines the reduction is necessary to avoid unnecessary or excessive collections. So unnecessary collections are defined as collections from a tax that go beyond the reasonably anticipated financial needs of the taxing authority for the specific purposes of the tax, after considering current fund balances, projected expenditures, and other available funding sources. Excessive collections are defined as collections that exceed what is required to provide services at a level consistent with statutory obligations. While I'm not an educator, as you know, I work with our finances, but I'm going to tell you as a parent that the concern here is, how do they know at a budget commission level, the difference between consistent and statutory obligation, which is a minimum level of education, if I understand that correctly, Joelle, correct me if I'm wrong, versus what we offer to our kids?
So to tie this back to what we saw tonight in our AP class presentation of the high school students, the county could say, offering AP classes is excessive. The state doesn't require that, so therefore, you choose, you need money to offer AP. Well, we find that excessive, so we're going to take that money away from you.
So, yes, they could, but what I think they're really looking at, it goes back to a conversation that was in another bill about cash balances.
Yes.
If you recall, over the summer, they were going to limit our ability to have any cash reserves from year to year. It was going to be limited to 30%. We all spoke up and said, this is problematic, because many school districts use their cash balance to fund a building, so they don't have to go on the ballot or to do some type of PI project, and so they wanted to limit that. The legislation has come back to say, okay, you can have a cash balance now of just 100% of your budget. So if your budget is $50 million a year, you can have up to $50 million for your carryover, no more. And if you do. So I think this provision is, the county commissioner, they're looking at it as, what is your cash balance? And if your cash balance, they feel, is excessive, not necessarily your day-to-day programming, but if your cash balance is excessive, then they can invoke this and roll it back and say...
And based on our five-year forecast, our cash balance doesn't even get near 50% of our expenditure.
Correct.
Is there any right, like, how is this determined? Is it in their sole discretion? Is there any right of appeal if they make this decision?
It's not clear yet.
It's not clear yet. And that's what's difficult about all of this, because there are so many budget bills right now that are being talked about in Columbus. These two that we just discussed, these two have passed, or at least as of October 8, they were amended in the House and Ways Committee, and they were approved by the full house. So now the bill moves to the Senate for consideration. So that's where both of these two bills lie right now. So there'll be further discussion at the Senate level, I'm sure. Either they'll massage it and amend it further, pass it as is, or, you know...
Jack, can I ask you a question or do me a favor before, let's say, the next meeting? If you can. If we could find out which House people are sponsoring these bills?
Sure.
And find out what school districts they represent and where they rank in the state report card of rankings? Because if, what I suspect, and I could be wrong, but you got probably a bunch of people that represent school districts that probably are not high-performing schools, they don't value education, and they're just like, yeah, how can we just keep hurting public schools? And I think it's utterly ridiculous what is going on down there.
Sure, I'll have that for you in the next couple of days.
Thanks.
I think there's one other element about this, and again, those of us who sat in our chairs trying to have a conversation with the community about us needing money, is you don't want to have that conversation every three to five years, or there's distrust that the finances are not being managed well. So we have always approached trying to get 10-year levies on the ballot with the understanding, you're going to see a five-year forecast, and we're going to have a plan to get us through years 6 through 10. And that accounts for the fact that the revenue during that time from the state is going to stay the same, but our expenses and inflation are going to grow over time. So to your point about cash balances, they're always going to look bigger right when you pass a levy, because you're factoring it of that amount of money is really supposed to last you 10 years. So there's a, you know, and thankfully, we're not to this level that seems to be of concern, but if they were to ever lower that, it's really short-sighted because what you're then forcing is districts to be on the ballot more often and have less certainty about their finances. And again, as we've all said, you know, had millions of conversations, there's less trust with the community because they're saying, why are you asking for more money again, more often? You know, and so that, we've always tried to approach it, again, with an emergency levy, it's a fixed dollar amount. People are going to vote yes, or they're going to vote no, but they're going to know what it is and for how long. And this seems like this is pushing us towards some sort of perpetual levy cycle, that you're always trying to go back and hit the mark every three to five years if some of these things go through. And that's just not good business.
What's the next hit parade here, Autumn, on a substitute bill?
Yeah, I always feel like I'm the bearer of bad news when it comes to money.
Do you want me to take the last two and give you a break?
Yes.
So, House Bill 186, it's a substitute bill. What they're trying to do, if you recall, we had our reappraisal this past year, and we saw our reappraisal for our city was an average of 28%. Well, that impacted our inside millage. We got a little bit of an increase on our inside millage. What they want to do in this bill is cap that increase on the inside millage to whatever the rate of inflation is. So if we got, if, you know, our appraisal went up 28%, whatever inflation was for last year, we'd only get that amount of increase on that inside millage. So not, so there's some concern about, you know, if we went through another reappraisal period in four years, or whenever they reappraise, and it goes up another 28%, you know, currently we'd get whatever that increase is on just those inside millage, that would now be capped at whatever the inflationary cost is moving forward. So still waiting to see what that is. And then, the last one, limits the inside millage revenue when the county has the reappraisal, kind of just what I talked about. So it's two bills that are kind of trying to address. And the whole point behind both of those bills is that we have some of our legislators who think that, you know, people are, we're getting these increases, or people are getting taxed on things that they can't vote on. And so what they're trying to do is pull some of that inside millage out, so it's now voted on millage, and there isn't just this natural increase from that inside millage. So we'll wait to see what happens with both of those as well.
So really, that state and local partnership of what we should be looking at, we fully recognize that tax reform is needed, but I think when you look at the statistics that Joelle provided earlier, it's not equal. It's not balanced reform. And that's what we hope by educating our community about these bills. And if you need more information about it, feel free to reach out to us. We're happy to provide that, because that's what we need. We need a state and local partnership that is balanced.
It will be interesting when the fiscal 25-year is closed for all the districts across the state, and you get that statistic that you put up about the spending per student, because we know we took a lot of expenses out. I would love to see what our state average is, you know, if we may have lowered ourselves to the bottom 40% or 35% in spending, yet, again, we're performing at a high level. And no one's going to give us credit for that. We're just hearing more news, you know, tighten your belt more, which is, I mean, we look at what has gone on in this district between very difficult staff cuts, closing a building, having to make so many difficult decisions, like, this is disappointing to hear that, you know, we're not on a different path, even with doing all those things. So, thank you for laying all that out. We're going to have to probably make a segment of this at each of our upcoming meetings just for these updates as things get closer to understanding areas moving forward, or they've been thrown out, so that our voters can understand what's going on, and that they can reach out to legislators to express their displeasure with that, hopefully, if that's how they feel. So back to the five-year forecast. Anything, any other questions on that piece? All right, can I have a motion to approve the five-year forecast?
I still move.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, item B.
Joelle, do you want to talk about this one?
Sure. So, before you, for consideration, is a purchase agreement with the city of Avon Lake for the sale of the properly formerly known as Earview School. We are happy to say that we were able to come to an agreement in terms with the city of Avon Lake for them to purchase Earview. I know some of our community was very concerned that we would be tearing down that building, and we're happy to report that that's not going to happen. So, the sale, it has to be approved by our board as well as city council. They are required by law, anytime they are purchasing land of any kind, that they have to go through three reads. We do not have that same requirement, so with your consideration this evening, this will move on to city council for their three reads and subsequent approval, and talking to the mayor today at the beginning of December.
Any questions on the purchase agreement? All right, I think this is a really good thing for the city. Kind of a motion to approve the approval of the purchase agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item C.
So next, we have a resolution declaring transportation impractical for the current school year. We have had pieces of this on our agenda, I believe it was on our August board meeting. So we just have a couple additional students that are going to be included in being declared impractical to transport on a school bus.
Okay, normal business here. So can I have a motion to approve the resolution for impractical transportation?
I still move.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next, we'll move on to the superintendent's consent items.
For your consideration, we have some certified personnel recommendations, as well as classified, our supplementals that are mostly our winter supplemental, coaching positions and winter supplementals. We have some volunteers that are chaperoning some kids to Kettering, and we have a leave of absence and some donations that are outlined on the agenda. We also are, as you know, the fiscal agent for the library, so they are appointing a trustee, so that's the term of their trustee. And then our athletic game day personnel pay revised scale for those of our employees who work those game days. The marching band is traveling to Orlando, Florida for this school year. We have our Avon Lake Athletic Girls Basketball Trip for the '25-'26 school year, and the Avon Lake Broadcast Journal Biennial Trip to Tampa Bay, Florida for this school year, for your consideration.
All right. Any questions?
So, yeah, well, not a question, just a comment. So regarding the friends of the school, I want to thank the athletic boosters. With all this action being done by the state, we're probably going to need science boosters, math boosters, English boosters, AP boosters, to help fund the schools because the state keeps taking away revenue. But yeah, definitely, all this stuff would not even be considered if it wasn't for booster organizations, because we just don't have the money to do it.
All right. Okay, I have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, I guess we have our first reading of some policy manual. Any highlights there?
No highlights. It's policy. No, these are just either revisions or laws that were passed that could be new policies. So most of these, I believe, are revisions that we have up here. We get updates two times a year unless there is some legislation that passed that it was required immediate action, then we'll have some special policies in between. So this is our first group of them that have been updated due to changes in laws or changes in current, just revisions that have been brought to Neil's attention.
Okay, so we'll vote on those after the second reading next?
Yes.
Okay. Other, I might, Ms. Opaskar, I know you had mentioned you wanted to chime in a little bit on, as our JVS rep, the little update?
Yes, I have an update from the JVS. I did not have this information at the last meeting. I got it afterwards. And for the state report card, they received 4.5 stars, which I think is excellent, that the community should be aware of. Their graduation rate is 96%. Their career readiness and workforce data is 64.9% employed within six months after leaving high school, and the post-secondary enrollment is at 50.1%.
Awesome. We appreciate you attending those meetings and keeping us in the loop on stuff. I know a lot of great things are going on at the JVS, so...
Yes, there are.
Ms. Magyar, did you have any other items?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Wanted just to let you know, as we are moving farther into this design phase, it's important that we start to identify some staff that is going to be kind of overseeing the new 5-8 building. So we will be putting out a message this Friday saying that Teresa Lengel is going to be named principal of the 5-8 building, so I just wanted you to have a heads up. We're very excited that she is looking forward to leading us in this new building. Other staff to be determined at a later date, but we needed to start identifying some of those people so that they can participate in that feedback loop that TDA spoke of on the design and some of the elements of that building. So just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay.
And we opened up at the high school, I know, last year, if you remember, Learwood did a presentation on John's Safe Space, and we had, so we opened up a second spot in the high school. It is a beautiful... It is a beautiful room. It's right off the office. I received a $500 grant last school year to actually assist in making that room a special place for the kids. So we've engaged with student leaders throughout the high school to see what they would like to see in that room if they needed to go in there and just kind of, you know, decompress a bit. So we will be purchasing more of those items. But right now in there, there is a fish tank. It's very soothing. The kids are seeming to enjoy it, and we're going to be adding to it. So just wanted to mention that, that just is something positive that we are doing at the high school to meet the needs of our students.
Awesome. Anything else, Mike?
Nope.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Sherbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Opaskar?
Yes.
Mr. Stobie?
Yes.
Motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned at 7:51 PM.
Thank you all for attending.